We will call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Pugnay?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
We'll now have our flag salute by Boy Scout Troop 262. Let us there.
Code Guard, prepare to advance. Code Guard, advance. May you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. May be seated. Prepare to post colors. Post colors. Code Guard salute. Two. Code Guard, regroup. Code Guard, retreat.
Thank you very much, Boy Scout Troop 262. Tonight, our invocation is brought to us by Reverend James Griffiths from Palm Springs Presbyterian Church. Good evening and Happy New Year.
Blessed New Year to you all, so. I just want to say I'm enthusiastic about this city council and about this city and about the nation we're in, the state of California. City of Palm Springs is a great city and you're a great council and we're glad to have you in the leadership of our city here. You know where the word enthusiasm comes from. Most CEOs will tell you that, successful CEOs, ethical CEOs will tell you that more important than training and skill and even experience is enthusiasm. And the word comes from enthuse. It means "from God" and that's where that great emotion comes from. And so let's pray for that, for our city and for this meeting tonight. Almighty God, bless this meeting tonight. Bless the people of Palm Springs, this new city council and their work. To the end, dear Lord, that we would be filled with enthusiasm for the good and for the true and the beautiful. And give us wisdom, give this council your strength and your courage, dear Lord, to do the right, we pray. In your strong name. Amen.
Amen and thank you. We don't have any presentations this evening. We'd just like to say to all of our citizens and visitors a very Happy New Year. We will move on to the report of posting of the agenda. City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday. The council tonight received in the yellow folders before them additional material concerning item eight. On your agenda, you should likewise note that the action that is recommended on that will be a resolution rather than amended order. So item eight will be a resolution rather than amended order. Thank you.
We will have a report on the closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, the items on the closed session agenda. For the redevelopment agency, the item involving VIP Motors was not discussed. The item involving real property negotiations with Gabay concerning the property at Jean Autry and Ramon, we gave a status report, no action was taken. The item involving Star Canyon Resorts was not discussed. The item involving Sunrise Hacienda Partners, Coachella Housing Coalition, we gave a status report, no action was taken. The item involving the Cuiya Road property, Winter, we gave a status report, no action was taken. The item involving Landmark Equities, we gave a status report, no action was taken. The item involving litigation involving the alcohol anti-band of Cuiya Indians, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Negotiations with Desert Water Agency for the city on behalf of, concerning the wastewater treatment plant, we gave a status report, direction was given for further negotiations. The item involving the McLean Road Burr Group was not discussed. The Trail Easement acquisition involving John Westman was not discussed. The Shadow Rock Project with Mark Bragg was not discussed. The Akanto property, Stitch Parcel was not discussed. Real property negotiations concerning Greyhound lines, no action was taken. The item involving real property Swank was not discussed. And the Desert Healthcare District negotiations on the Catherine Finch site were not discussed. The permalitigation was not discussed. The Eldorado litigation was not discussed. The Center for Biological Diversity and Sierra Club litigation was not discussed. Possible initiation of litigation, we gave a status report on one matter, no action was taken. The other items were not discussed.
Thank you. The council did establish a legal services committee and the members of that committee are council member Jenny Foad and Mayor Ron Oden. We will be bringing a report back incrementally, probably on a weekly basis. We will move now to housing authority, the financing authority, industrial development authority, community redevelopment agency. They have no business this evening and we will move to public comments. Anyone who wishes to speak on matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. You will have three minutes and I do have a few cards here. And the first person that I have is Susan Wasserman, followed by John Schoenberger. Susan here? Good evening and welcome. You will have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Susan Wasserman and I spoke to you at the December 3rd city council meeting. I'm a Cathedral City resident and I'm speaking concerning the new Palm Springs Skate Park. I have a 7th grade son at Raymond Cream and Old School and a 9th grade son at Palm Springs High School. Both of them are skateboarders who have been looking forward to the local skate park for two years. The beautiful new Palm Springs Skate Park opened during the winter break. In November, Resolution 20789 was amended to allow an annual membership fee of $10 for city residents, but to exclude non-residents from the regular use of the skate park by charging a daily use fee of $5, with no annual membership allowed. This means Palm Springs Unified School District students, except for those who are Palm Springs residents, are excluded from membership. One year ago, my family contributed $100 to build this skate park. In the past three weeks, we have paid daily use fees of $55. Both of my sons would like to skate four to five days a week at the skate park, but of course, that would cost us over $2,500 a year. Please reconsider this decision. Charge us non-residents double or triple the annual membership fees that residents pay, but don't make it impossible for our children to regularly use the local skate park. Both Palm Desert and Indio have annual membership fees of $5 open to everyone regardless of their address. Please don't adopt an elitist attitude towards your neighbors. Please direct the city manager to look into the skate park fees and report back to this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schoenberger. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is John Schoenberger. I live at 760 Sierra Way. I'm the person who wrote the long letter regarding the proposed reorganization of the planning department. And I apologize for the length of that letter. Like Mark Twain said, "I wrote a long letter because I didn't have time to write a short one." I realize this matter is not on the agenda tonight. And I'm here because I have a few additional comments that I wanted to make before this matter comes up again, which I think will be in two weeks and hopefully while the members of the council are still thinking about this matter and making up their minds. I know you have received some other letters from other past planning commissioners and present planning commissioners in support of the letter I wrote. I also know that there are other supporting letters being written and I think you'll have those before the matter comes up again at your next meeting. I wanted to report to you tonight that I have spoken to every planning commissioner, past and present, that has served on the planning commission in the last three and a half years, which is the time that I've been on the planning commission. And every one of them, with one exception, is in agreement with the letter I wrote and the conclusions in that letter. The one exception is Ricky Wright, who is new on the planning commission and simply said that he didn't feel that he'd been on the planning commission long enough to really form an opinion. I did want the council to be aware of this and not to have the impression that if all of these folks don't write a letter, that it means that they don't support the letter I wrote and the conclusions in that letter. The reason I think that it is important for the views of these people to be considered is that they have devoted literally thousands of hours in the aggregate to planning issues before the city of Palm Springs in the past several years. And they have had the opportunity to observe our planning department firsthand, virtually on a weekly basis, given the fact that the planning commission meets twice a month. There's a study session once a month. The planning commissioners also attend design review meetings, not all of them, but there's always a planning commissioner, at least one, at each design review meeting. And also on the committees that the planning commission has, such as the committee that's now doing the...
I have to ask you to come to a close?
Okay, I'll come to a close. In any event, what I hope is that the council will give serious consideration to the views of these folks who have been so involved in the planning process. And I hope that the council will also, in the end, decide to give the planning department the support that it needs and not to reorganize it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to call Dr. Michael Murray. Followed by Ron Jesser. Good evening and welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening. In my career as a physician and psychiatrist, I was always asking the question, "Why?" Now, in this political arena, I have added the question, "Who?" On December 17th at the city council meeting, four of us from Araby Cove spoke about the transgressions of George Morantz and G&amp;M Construction in mining the wash illegally and making a profit from selling the illegally obtained fill. Two persons spoke before our group. One was a woman, not an Araby resident, who gave a rather structured diatribe on the specific necessity of maintaining the wash. Who was she and why was she here? We, the Araby residents, quite well aware of the necessity of maintaining the wash as we live right there and have viewed the flow of water when it rains. Well, she works for an engineering firm, a firm that may do business with G&amp;M Construction Company. The second person that spoke was our own esteemed developer, John Westman. He is not an Araby resident either. Why was he here? Well, he is a friend and, I guess I'll say, colleague of George Morantz, whose projects' bottom line depend on the cheapest fill he can get and who has worked with George Morantz for years. Do you believe they were at the city council meeting out of their concern for the welfare of Araby Cove residents? Let's not be so naive. They were there trying to influence you and to turn the spotlight away from George Morantz and his illegal activities. Have they been involved and benefited from these illegal activities? That remains to be discovered. Also at the meeting was Troy Bootslove, our assistant city manager, and George Barakian, our chief engineer. Both wanted us desperately to understand that they responded quickly when they found out that George Morantz never had any permits from Riverside County Flood Control and had trespassed onto private property and stolen the fill. We applaud them for their actions. However, the Araby residents want the answer to other primary questions. I had been calling Building and Safety for over a year before they responded and found out the truth. The real question remains, who told Building and Safety in 2002 that George Morantz and G&amp;M Construction Company, quote, "had a multi-year contract with Riverside County Flood Control to maintain the wash"? In the first place, a multi-year contract was repeated to me by many people at Building and Safety. So this falsehood was common knowledge. Who was the first to lie? Also, who maintained this fabrication to Building and Safety for over a year while I kept telephoning? The answer to these two questions is vital because those people obviously have some role in the lying, deceit, fraud, trespassing, and grand theft, just like Mr. Morantz himself. It appears it could only have come from a few sources at this moment. I hope I'm wrong. It could have come from George Morantz himself, his wife Diane, one of our planning commissioners, Mayor Clindings, or the few other people who might benefit from such a deception, like the engineers or developers that worked with or collaborated with George Morantz. These questions must be answered as the nature of what happened is criminal and cannot be disregarded or dismissed. Your role in this matter is now pivotal. You must undo the damage that has been done to the wash. You must repair our road. You must protect the neighborhood to make sure such transgressions never occur again. And you must discover all of the perpetrators and beneficiaries of the illegal acts which have taken place in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Jesser, followed by Keith McCormick. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ron Jesser. I am building a house at 2929 Araby Circle. Mr. Mayor, city council members, gentlemen and ladies, and the city of Palm Springs. The Araby Coalition will be meeting here at the city hall next Thursday, January 15th. This time is going to be at 5:30 and we invite you, the city council, if at all possible, to meet and come to that scheduled meeting. We were told that there would be a report shortly about the wash and I think you folks are doing an investigation on that. And we, the coalition, would like to see if that report has been completed or if you have any information that you could possibly get it to us by that meeting and of course, if you can't, you can't. And then also, we're having, at that meeting, we're also going to be discussing the South Ridge Cove development. And that's another reason why, if at all possible, we would like to invite you folks to come to that meeting. And then also, as the Araby residents, we feel, based upon the information that we have on George Morantz and the unscrupulous conduct that has highly and is highly irregular and inappropriate for his wife Diane, that we would like to ask for the city and the Palm Springs Planning Commission to ask for her resignation. And we ask that you, and we're requesting that immediately. Thank you very much.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is Keith McCormick. I'm president of Palm Springs Exotic Car Auctions. Our company, for the past 18 years, have conducted two large, successful antique car shows and auctions in Palm Springs. My family and I have lived here for 23 years. Our events started at the Marquee Hotel. We outgrew that. They then moved to the Riviera Hotel. We outgrew that. We moved to the Convention Center. We haven't outgrown that. The proposed remodel bumped us to look for a temporary location, hence item six on your agenda tonight. Last November, we conducted a successful event in the new downtown parking center with little or no complaints and great support from the downtown merchants. We did not close Palm Canyon. We did not close Indian Avenue. We are requesting the same times and usage as we did in November as the license agreement that you have before you tonight. Our sales tax collected check is going to be very close to $140,000. That's $18,000 to $19,000 direct to the city from our event. We would like to use this facility until we can get contracts back at the Convention Center. The Convention Center is reluctant to give us a few years of future dates as they are compensated by TOT tax collected. Sales tax from special events of this type that cannot prove 1,000 room nights, even though many thousands do attend, hence we don't get forward contracts. I am requesting the city manager ask the Convention Center to make an exception to their booking policy to accommodate us back after the remodel. I'm willing to sign contracts now. Let's continue the business-friendly mode that is going on right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Tom Suet. Good evening and you'll have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, councilpersons, I'd like to cover three items, if I may, very quickly. One, I'd like to congratulate this council on the recent election and the new members and the older member, our senior member over there. The three items, really, I think, you know, I have been historically, and I've been in the city almost 40 years. I've been the first one to complain and gripe about things that occur within the city government, both publicly and privately. And at the same time, when something positive happens, such as two weeks ago, I had a major Fortune 500 company that wants to locate in Palm Springs. Had a meeting with Doug Evans, Troy, and the planning department people. And I can tell you, in 26 some odd years doing things in this city in terms of building, it was the most professional, pleasant experience I've had in that period of time. And I think Doug, you, and David Reddy, and Troy and them are to be congratulated on the way you dealt with a very major and sophisticated developer. And I thank you for that. The second item was, I think this council, and maybe a little bit in contrast to my dear friend, John Schoenberger, I think the city has a unique opportunity right now. We're in something of an economic crisis and with that comes an opportunity to step back and take a look at how we've operated our city. We have a perception in this valley as being a business unfriendly city. Each of you ran on a platform of business friendly and I congratulate you again for that. But now I think that there's a, there's an, I think you have the unity to put forth and change that perception that Palm Springs has. I hear it over and over and over through Canyon National Bank and dealing with developers throughout the valley. And it's a pleasure to start having pleasant experiences in Palm Springs. And I think if this council continues working together, I think as a cohesive body, I think we can have a progressive city. And for that, I thank you very much.
And thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in public comments? If there is, please come forward at this time. Then we will close public comments. We will move on in our agenda to the consent agenda. If there are any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I need to abstain on one warrant on number five. Number 993406. Business-related. And also, I'd like to pull item number three so the mayor can leave the room.
I will be abstaining on item number three, so when it's pulled, I will pass gavel to our mayor pro temp. Because of proximity to my home. Are there any others, council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilmember Mills. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember McCullough. Roll, and this is for items one, two, four, and five. Roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. And with that, I will leave the room and pass gavel. Just one question. Ms. Ashar, would you give us the distance for the, or proximity to a specific location in order to have a...
The distance in terms of...
Conflict.
Your conflict is 500 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. We are on item number three on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve item number three?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pugnay, second by Mr. McCullough. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ron.
There are no extended consent agenda, no public hearings, council comments, announcements, Mr. Mills.
Yes, Mr. Oden. Just that, that all of us attended the ribbon-cutting for the visitor's center at the old tramway gas station yesterday. It was a great event. Happy to have that facility open. I was told by Ms. Fort that the month of December, since they've been open, previous month in December, they put 13,000 people through their doors in a month, which is more than they'd ever done. And as she pointed out, that was without a sign. So we think, I think, and I think all of us agree, that the project is working well, although it's a little bare on landscaping. We're looking at taking care of that when we, when we, when we can, so. And then, of course, the opening of the Film Festival is tomorrow at Palm Springs High, and we sure encourage anyone to attend, everyone, anyone and everyone to attend. And the opening of the Skate Park is Saturday, January 17th at noon at the Skate Park at Sunrise Plaza at the Pool Center. And I am told that is going to be a tremendous event with exhibitions. Is that right, Lee? And I'm sure, and hot dogs, and more other things that I'm sure you'll read about in the newspaper. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other...
Mr. Mayor. Having served as the chair of the Development Task Force, we worked very hard for many months to tackle the perceived or real problems in the City Hall here about being business unfriendly. And I'd like to thank Mr. Suet for his comments. I've heard from three different people who do a lot of business in Palm Springs, the exact same story. So I want to compliment the city manager, the assistant city manager, and Mr. Evans and his staff for a job well done. You're making us look really good.
Ms. Vogt.
Yeah, I wanted to take a minute to thank everyone, all of our citizens in the city, and specifically the neighborhood associations for opening their homes during the holiday season. It was kind of a little shock to receive 25 invitations to events over the holiday season and tried to make all of them, and it was just wonderful. The neighborhood associations from the Tennis Club area to Deepwell to Chino Canyon, all of those neighborhoods had association parties and neighborhood watch parties and opened their homes to the city council members. And so I, for one, just want to thank all the citizens who did, who did do that. And I also want a special thank you to the staff because the staff over the holidays did an incredible job of, in their toy drive and in the certificates, the McDonald's certificates to the senior citizens, which came out of their own pockets. And so I think it was a wonderful holiday season. I was really proud to be part of this city and proud to live in this city. And thank you all very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pugnay.
I would like to certainly echo Ms. Vogt's comments, and in addition, thank all of the citizens that in 2003 volunteered their time and efforts on behalf of the city and encouraged citizens to become involved in 2004 and volunteer and help your city. So, thank you.
Thank you. We all had such a busy holiday season and, of course, attended many of the same functions, far too many to mention the parties. And just like to give a brief report, Councilmember Vogt and I attended a luncheon with the dean of Cal State San Bernardino Campus in Palm Desert. Also, councilmembers attended the open house at the library honoring our new librarian, Barbara Roberts. I offered the opening comment and welcome at the Caballeros Concert, the lighting of the menorah at Palm Springs Mall. Attended a memorial luncheon for one of our former commissioners, Carl Proust, former member of the Historic Site and Preservation Board. Did a welcome for the Western Baptist State Convention held at the Riviera Hotel. I attended the event Icons and Legends and presented a proclamation to Michael Childers, who has just an exceptional exhibit at Desert Museum. So those of you who have not had the opportunity to go out and see it, please stop in. And met this morning with the general managers of the hotels in the city of Palm Springs, and we had several meetings with Coachella Valley Multispecies Habitat Plan Committee. And just like to say to all of our citizens, Happy New Year, and to our council, Happy New Year, and we're glad to be together and working hard for the city of Palm Springs. And with that, we will move to our legislative items. Item number six, Keith McCormick's Palm Springs Exotic Car Auctions Staff Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a request to approve a license agreement and a release of waiver of rights with Keith McCormick so he can present his car auction at our downtown parking structure. This has been approved by the Main Street, and the downtown merchants are in favor of this. I would note that the thing that is part and parcel of this staff report is a policy that we are putting in place for future rental of the parking structure for these kind of events. It limits the kinds of events, when they can be held, and when exceptions and things need to come to the city council. So that is a highlight and a bonus that we have for you this evening, and then we won't have to come to you for these kinds of resolutions in the future. It'll be prescribed by the policy that's in your staff report. And with this, we would recommend that you approve the resolutions. Thank you.
Are there any questions on this staff report, council?
Move the minute order.
Moved by Councilmember Mills. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vogt. Any additional questions, remarks?
I just have a question about parking. Has any, any thought been given to where we're going to direct people for parking? Are we opening up any other areas that would not normally be open for parking?
Yes, indeed. Thought has been given to that. And I would ask Jerry Augburn, who's here with us this evening, Director of Downtown Development, to come, and he can address that issue.
Good evening, Mr. Augburn.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, this, as Mr. McCormick indicated, is identical to a previous event that he's had. The parking solution last time seemed to work pretty well, in which we encouraged primarily the employees that use the upper deck of that structure to locate to other lots over east of downtown, Cayenne City and that area, and other lots that are underutilized further to the south. This isn't something we'd like to see on a regular basis, certainly, but it seemed to work at that time, and we think it will work again this time. So the restaurants on the block in that area have agreed to direct their employees away from the structure, and that seems to help. There are 119 spaces on that level and 374 in a total structure, so that is, that is an impact. But by moving the employees, it seems to help enough.
Are there any other questions? Roll call.
Ms. Vogt.
Aye.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. Passes unanimously. The recommendation of staff. And we will move now to item number seven, Municipal Code Amendment Auction Sales.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is, again, a reform that's coming before you that you will see in a parade of reforms and regulations that we're trying to do throughout our whole process of development services. This one has to do with auction sales right now. In many instances, it's a cumbersome process, needing both a land use permit and approval by the Planning Commission, and there's a couple other steps. This narrows that process and makes it easier, and it gives approval authority to the Planning Department without the necessary Planning Commission process. And I would ask Mr. Evans to comment. There are a couple other nuances to this that he may want to brief council. Thank you.
Well, I think the key issue is to reduce or eliminate redundancy, and we've tried to do this in the past. If somebody goes through the process of getting a permit or a use agreement at a city facility, and then they have to come to the Planning Department for a separate permit, it was redundant. We did run this by the Planning Commission because we were taking some permit review authority away from them. They're in full concurrence. We do very few auction sale permits in the city. I think tonight's one of the premier auctions you just acted upon, and we do a few more. They're always associated typically with an event. Now, that completes our report. We'll certainly answer any questions that you have.
Counsel, are there any questions? Then we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Motion for approval of the ordinance. Read title, wave text, please.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Vogt. So we have a motion and a second.
That's pretty close.
Any questions? All in roll call.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this would be an ordinance of the city of Palm Springs, California, approving an amendment to the Palm Springs Municipal Code to allow auction sales at city-owned facilities subject to land use permit with review and approval by the Director of Planning and Zoning citywide.
Ms. Vogt.
Aye.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. Passes unanimously, 5-0. And we will move to item number eight, surplus city property.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In looking at the ordinance, in, this is not one of the provisions of the ordinance that was just, you were just looking at in terms of discussion, but in the second section, it says enclosed building requirement, and then it says no auction shall be conducted other than a permanent building. And I was just asking Doug, because obviously the parking structure is not an enclosed building. It does talk about the auction being conducted in a place of assembly which the parking structure would fit. If the intent of this ordinance is that the parking structure is an eligible qualified place to conduct such an auction, then I think perhaps, instead of using the terminology concerning an enclosed building, we would want to change that language. Since it's on tonight for first reading, it would make that a part of your action to correct that language. We would not have to redo the first reading. And Doug was indicating that he thought, yes, that it was the intent that it be in a permanent structure, but it's not intended that it be in an enclosed building. It is intended that the parking structure be an eligible location.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Could I have a quick conference with the city attorney? Should take just a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Moving on to number eight. Actually, we have, this is a very positive thing and an opportunity to do something patriotic for our country. We have been requested from the United States Army Central Command Kuwait. They are in the, looking for an ARF vehicle. This is a firefighting equipment that has the ability to fight fires at airports, on airplanes. It pierces the body of the fuselage when needed. We have an old one that we were going to surplus and sell. Through federal grants, we have obtained the new ones, which means we were going to surplus the old one. They have a request to purchase that. And what's before you is that request at a cost of about $85,000. They will pay us for this vehicle. Now, when we surplus, if we were to surplus it, we would not anticipate to get that level of dollars. So two things this does. One, it gives the city additional revenue, which, of course, is more than what we think we would get on the market. Second, it would be an opportunity to serve, and actually, this is Camp Erf John in the Middle East, and this particular camp, it's, they note, protects over 100, over 10,000 soldiers assigned to that installation. So in accordance with our rules for bypassing the bid process, this resolution is before you, and it's strongly supported by our fire chief and our director of procurement, and we request you approve this resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Just in terms of the bypass, do we have any historical precedent for this?
Yes, we have in times past, when we needed to have such a kind of sale, it's required to bring it to city council for their approval, and this has been done in the past.
Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the resolution.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember McCullough and second by Councilmember Mills. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Vogt.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Mr. Oden.
Aye. It passes unanimously, 5-0. And we will return to our city, well, to Mr. Evans, you had the floor last, or our city attorney. And this is just comments on item number seven.
Well, the only question is whether we need to, in the exempt, the section on exempt activities, we talk about that city-owned facilities are exempt. And so it would be the, is it the council intent that city-owned facilities would include non-enclosed buildings, such as the parking structure?
Facility.
That...
I would think so, but if we want to...
If I could add, the intent was to have this cover the parking structure, in theory, the stadium, if we ever had something. The provision regarding enclosed buildings is for private auctions, where we want them in a building, where they're, they're in a place that's appropriate for public assembly. There's an exception that says city-owned facilities, including the parking structure and the like, is exempt from that provision. And that was the intent.
Would it be easier if we simply add it to that motion, subject to the approval, the language of the city attorney?
Well, I think we could just add a phrase, including non-enclosed facilities, and if it was the intent...
Make it clean if that's what it takes.
If it's the intent of the council, we can reflect that in the action to introduce this for first reading. Would that be the intent?
I didn't, I didn't hear what you said, David.
If it is the intent to make sure that the parking structure stadium, we could simply add a phrase to that language saying, including non-enclosed structures. So if that is your intent, which is the staff recommendation...
Under, under the city structures.
Yes, right.
Yeah, that's fine. As a motion, I, no, I have a problem. It's a new motion anyway, right?
Yes. This is just a minute. Yes, new motion.
We can, if we can, if it's the intent of the council, let that be included in the matter that was introduced, then we will reflect that in the, when we bring it back for second reading, we'll have the exact language.
That's fine. Are there any additional legislative items?
There are none, sir.
Are there any, any added starters?
There are none.
Reports or requests?
Mr. Mayor.
We're next, counsel.
I like those from us.
Okay, counsel, reports or requests?
Thank you. I wanted to go back to that issue that we talked about in light of the memorandum that we received from our city clerk regarding the boards and commissions' application process. And to make sure that we have that on a study session agenda really soon so that it stays in the timeline.
Ms. Vogt, I believe that that is on, it's scheduled for next... Ms. Vogt, I believe that that is on, it's scheduled for next week on the 14th, that discussion. Thank you.
Okay. And then I also wanted to make a request that we review the possibility of having an all-day study session, because I think that with the things that are on our study session agenda, some of the items that we have to discuss that I think are important are not scheduled to come up on study session for several months. And I think some of those items are really important, not only to, to the operation of the city, but also to a number of businesses and, and different entities in the city. So, I would like to make a recommendation that you research a date and see if the rest of the council agrees to having an all-day study session where we can move some of these items up, because it, it doesn't seem timely the way, for instance, where the taxi advertising thing is somewhere six months from now, and, and, and some of the other issues I think that are important.
Are, are you seeing this as something that's time-sensitive? You want this to take place within a certain timeframe?
Well, I think it should take place soon, because we, we have a long list, and, and I have called Mr. Reddy on several occasions and said, what about this? And, and we've got study sessions that are packed for the next month or two. And so, I think it might behoove us to go into a much longer, day-long study session and try and iron out some of the issues that we have to iron out, so that they can come up on our agenda.
Perhaps what we should look at then, I'd recommend that if we're going to have study sessions, that we would look at a Wednesday, since that's consistently been our day, and within the next 30 days, the next four Wednesdays, and let council, you'll be in touch with the council members and see which one would be best for us.
Mr. Mayor, next week at our study session, we will be having the agenda docket review to prioritize what gets on study session, and perhaps council could, could give some thought at that time. We could set, actually set the meeting, if you'd give some thought between now and then, to which Wednesday would be most appropriate for your schedules. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other council reports or requests? Mr. Mills?
I would like to, to our lengthy list of study session items, and I'm not putting any priority on this, but I would like to add, add a review of the, the election sign reform policies. And we, we looked at it a while ago, at Planning, Planning Commission, when I, when I was on, and we, we modified it then, and based on the last election, I think it might need a little more modification, so. Present company excluded, of course.
Thank you.
And also, I wondered if, if we could, we could get a report on the current hiring policies of the city. Just something brief. Just, I mean, I'm, I'm curious to, to, to find out what our hiring policy is, both in replacement of jobs of people that have either no longer working here or have slid sideways or however they slide, and also new hires for, for new positions that are currently not in existence, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm, Councilmember Mills, that, that is a good question, and I think what I would like to do is, next week at the study session, we're having our quarterly budget review. In part and parcel of that is a list of positions, and part of that discussion is to be which position is to be filled, not to be filled. And so, I will actually add that to the agenda as a subset of that discussion, and we'll be able to give you a full report and written recommendations of how we want to address that. Thank you.
I'd like to also address what, what the current policy is. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pugnay?
Yes, Mr. Reddy. I would like a report on senior affordable housing. How many units do we have? What is an average rent? Rent increases? That would be very helpful, please.
Are there any other requests? Then treasures investment report, as of November 30th, that it be filed. Public reports or requests? Staff report or requests?
There are none.
There are none. Then our next regular meeting will be on January 21st, 2004, at 7:00 PM. Our next study session will be January 14th, 2004, at 7:00 PM. Both will be preceded by closed sessions, and those closed sessions will begin at 4:00 PM. And we will call this meeting adjourned.